Good evening, everybody. This is not church, so if anybody wants to take the front couple of rows, please feel free to come do so. That's where the kids have to sit. Okay. Good evening and welcome to the Board of Education meeting on December 12th. The Board has just completed executive session in the Superintendent's office. We began at 6:00 PM at 104 Gray Street here in West Caldwell. The purpose of that meeting was to discuss personnel, litigation, miscellaneous and all business matters. The meeting was advertised and was compliant with the Open Public Meeting Act and NJSA 10:4-6, which is also known as Sunshine Law. The matters discussed will be made public when confidentiality is no longer required. Informal action pursuant to said discussions shall take place only at a meeting to which the public has been invited. We are now ready to begin our regular public monthly meeting here in the Harrison multipurpose room and via livestream. The Caldwell-West Caldwell Board of Education regular public monthly meeting is compliant with the Open Public Meeting Act and NJSA 10:4-6, which is also known as Sunshine Law. Notices have been sent to the progress in Caldwell, New Jersey, Star Ledger in Newark, New Jersey, Tap into West Essex, and have also been posted at the Board of Education Business Office here at the Harrison School Building and have been delivered to both clerks of Caldwell and West Caldwell for posting. Brian, can I ask you to take the role, please?
Yes. Student Representative Claire Kearden.
Here.
Mr. Diambola.
Here.
Mr. Elko.
Here.
Ms. Geddy.
Here.
Ms. Grosso.
Here.
Mr. Sipoletti.
Here.
There's five members present. We have form.
Thank you, Brian. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance played by our...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Just thinking, we should have had Detective Mazzio sing that.
That's true. It would have been beautiful.
Brian, any communications?
None.
Dr. Conklin, we're going to move to the Superintendent's report.
We have Kaden Conti and Chloe Sewes from the House of Courage from the Middle School joining us tonight. The young ladies can come over to the microphone.
Good evening tonight, Dr. Conklin and the Board of Education. We would just like to say thank you for having us tonight. My name is Chloe Sewes and I'm from the House of Courage.
And my name is Kaden Conti. I'm from the House of Courage as well. Grover Cleveland Middle School has some very exciting events this year, including House Days, Hoopapalooza, and the J-Fund. Student Council is organizing a movie night in the cafeteria this week as well.
The House Days we have had so far this year have been interactive and competitive. For those that are unaware of what a House Day is, GCMS is divided into eight houses or teams that compete in House Day activities to win points for their house. Also, one could earn points for their house by participating in Spirit Days, where we coordinate to dress similarly, for example, Pajama Day, White Out, and Twin Day. On our last House Day, we finished with our Hoopapalooza competition. Hoopapalooza is an elimination basketball challenge where students from every grade made teams and competed against each other. In the end, all of the student teams were defeated by our competitive teachers. It was a great way to end the day and begin our extended weekend for Thanksgiving.
We are currently wrapping up our J-Fund gift donation project for children and their families who will be spending their Christmas in hospital. This project is run by our advisory classes. During advisory, all students in the school are broken up into small groups and teachers to inform students of upcoming events or helpful videos, usually with a life lesson or message. The J-Fund project, where we adopt children in Newark-Beth Israel Hospital and St. Joe's Hospital, is by far the best activity that we participate in. I couldn't think of a better way to celebrate the holidays than helping children that are sick in the hospital. I know we are helping to make a difference in their lives. This week, Student Council will be running a movie night, premiering The Grinch on Thursday, December 15th. Student Council chose the movie, organized the event, and will be selling snacks to raise money for the school. This is an after-school event that we are really looking forward to. Service Leadership is also running a coat drive until December 23rd.
All in all, we have a variety of events going on at GCMS, and we are looking forward to a great year full of exciting events and activities, and we can't wait to plan more for 2023. This has been a great experience for Kaden and I, and we are very proud to share it with you tonight and experience it with our peers. Thank you again, Dr. Conklin and Board, for your time.
I'd like to invite Mr. Devlin up to the microphone. Before Mr. Devlin talks about the wonderful accomplishments of the football team this year, I'd like to remind Coach Romano, when I interviewed you last year for the position, and I said, "12-0, that's a huge accomplishment. What can you do next year?" And you said, "13-0." Here we are, 13-0.
I don't know about next year.
I didn't ask him what he's going to do next year, I just said this year.
Thank you, Dr. Conklin and the members of the Board of Education for taking the time to celebrate the success of our football team, but also for supporting all of our extracurricular activities. Before I turn things over to Mr. Romano, on behalf of the faculty administration, I just want to congratulate the coaches and players of our 2022 football team. Last year, we were here congratulating the outstanding 2021 team for their historic season, and many of the players here tonight were pivotal players on that team and have taken leadership roles this year. Your 2022 crew, built upon last year's success, and with your dedication, tenacity, and team bonding, made this James Caldwell High School football team like none others. As a spectator, you were exciting and fun to watch, and your success helped to bring the community together. The game at Rutgers will be a vivid memory for our students and community long after your graduation. Most important is the caliber of the character of our players. You remain positive role models for the school, and I thank your parents for that, but also your coaches for holding you to the high standards. This year was also historic because it was Coach Romano's first year as head coach, and I think that also speaks to something else about this community. And I think stemming from the leadership of Dan Romano, our Athletic Director, this community supports all of its extracurricular activities. There's a family that's built. You can't just come on and be the head coach and have a winning season like this if there wasn't history and support. So congratulations to all of you. I also want to thank the cheerleaders and their coaches, many of the cheerleaders are here tonight, and the pep band and Mr. Burrows for their dedication. They also start practicing early in August and come out and support our athletes regardless of the weather. Finally, I have to thank our students, fans, for remaining enthusiastic, supportive, fun, and respectful throughout the whole season. They are amazing. Congratulations to all of you.
Dr. Conklin, thanks very much for inviting me tonight, Board of Ed. I thank you for your support. This has been an amazing year. I stand before you tonight as a lifelong resident of West Caldwell, and I could not be prouder of what happened this fall and this football season. And the pride doesn't only come from our football team. Mr. Devlin mentioned it earlier. Our pep band, again, Mr. Burrows, our cheerleaders, the tribe, our student fans, absolutely amazing. If you attended the game at Rutgers or if you saw it on television, our community by far outnumbered every other championship game in the entire series this year, by far, not even close. That says a whole bunch about our community, and it gives me lots of pride to be a part of that community. And I think, as Mr. Devlin alluded, you know, that's what makes it so special, to be here in Caldwell-West Caldwell. So that's phenomenal. Onto a little bit of football. Seasons like this don't just happen accidentally. It starts from our senior leaders. We have so many great senior leaders on our team. They weren't necessarily captains. They weren't necessarily superstars on our team, but they were leaders for our team and our younger players, extremely important. You have to have that if you're going to have a quality team, whatever the sport might be. I have to give a shout out to our captains. Our captains were outstanding. Luke, Harry, Mike, and Thomas, absolutely outstanding. Not only during the season, you want to see these guys in the weight room, and I invite everyone here in this room to go down to our weight room one day and watch what these guys do. Absolutely phenomenal. And that's part of the formula. That's part of the formula. So great job by our senior captains as well. Have to give a shout out to our coaches. Brings me lots and lots of pride. It also tells me how old I am, because we probably have, I don't know, Coach, 15, 16, 17 coaches on our staff. Only, not even half of them are paid, which means that eight, nine, 10 of them are volunteers, volunteer coaches, giving up their time for the betterment of our kids. You can't beat that. A quick story about our coaches. I had a mid-season issue. I text Todd on a Sunday, and I said, "Todd, I'd like to meet with you and your coaches whenever we can." And this is a Sunday now, and he says to me, "Well, what are you doing? Come on over now." I said, "Well, where are you?" He said, "We're at the Fieldhouse watching film." I said, "How long are you going to be there, too?" He said, "Three, four o'clock." This is on a Sunday, three, four o'clock, they're going to be watching film. Again, these guys go seven days a week, hours and hours and hours a day to prepare our kids for battle, and it shows. Our volunteer coaches, again, shout out to them, but look at the entire coaching staff. We talk about community pride, again, over half of those on our coaching staff are Caldwell Chiefs. They're graduates of Caldwell High School. I was fortunate enough to coach every one of those kids at one point or another, but this is what brings pride in our community. So I couldn't be prouder of our coaches. Little bit of history was made this fall, little bit of history. We can now forever and ever and ever, when the trivia question comes up, who was the first Group II football state champion in New Jersey? That answer will be the Caldwell Chiefs forever and ever and ever. We have an amazing record going right now. 28 victories in a row, 28 wins in a row, 28 and 0. Absolutely amazing. When you look at our senior class, over their career, they won 31 games and lost three. When you look at our juniors, over their two-year careers, they're 25-0. Just amazing. I mean, I can't tell you how amazing that really is. So all of this adds up. Hard work, great coaches, dedication, community support, it all adds up, and hopefully it's a lesson for all of us to learn. All of that, all of that is led by one person, one person, and that's our head coach, Todd Romano. This is Todd's first year. You've got to know how hard that is to guide a team, and I don't care how much talent is on the team, there's always issues that go on during a season. First-year head coach, now he's been on the staff for 18 years, 17 years, whatever it is, but he handled it, handled everything flawlessly. So much, much, much of this credit goes to Todd. I couldn't be prouder of Todd as a head coach. He did a phenomenal job and deserves all the accolades that he's going to get as this season progresses, because, believe me, there's going to be Coach of the Year honors and all kinds of stuff is going to happen here. So I've talked enough. Again, pride is the theme of my talk right here, and I couldn't be prouder of Todd Romano. Todd, come on up.
I'm going to try to be brief here. On behalf of our football team, I'd like to thank Dr. Conklin and all of our Board of Education members for your unwavering support throughout this season. I'd like to thank our administrative team at Caldwell High School, Mr. Devlin, Ms. Schweitzer, Mr. Salisbury, and Athletic Director Dan Romano for all of your support. I'd like to thank the West Caldwell and Caldwell communities. This community is a special place. The way this town got behind this football team was unbelievable, and we felt it day in and day out. From the businesses on Bloomfield Avenue displaying Caldwell football win state signs to the residents decorating their properties, all made the small towns of Caldwell and West Caldwell feel like we were living in Texas. This team captured the heart of this community, because we were built in the same mold as many of our residents. We were a gritty, tough, hard-nosed football team with an elite work ethic, a will to win that was unmatched, and a love for each other that was never-ending. This team is Caldwell. I'd like to thank our entire coaching staff. I can say with confidence, there is not another football staff in the state of New Jersey that worked as hard as these men from August through December. They left no stone unturned and gave these young men the tools they needed each and every week. They are true professionals, and I would be honored to have any of them coach my son one day. Finally, I'd like to thank our players. You've all taken us on one of the most memorable sports journeys in the history of this town. I know a lot has been said, but here are the numbers. We finished this year 13-0, which is the most wins in school history. We have a 28 consecutive game winning streak, which is the longest active winning streak in the state of New Jersey and the eighth-longest in the entire country. We finished the season ranked number eight in the state of New Jersey, the number-one team in Essex County, and the first-ever New Jersey Group II state champion. You leave a legacy of excellence. I thank you for your sacrifice, your commitment, and for being the great young men that you are. You've represented this football program, this school district, this town, and your families with absolutely nothing but class. Over the last week, I've been asked many times, "What was the secret to our success?" And our formula is very, very simple. That formula is love and trust. Coach to coach, coach to player, player to coach, and player to player. If we have love and trust through those four relationships, then we have everything that we need to win. That is why this team is New Jersey State Champions. Thank you very much.
Want to bring them up? Want to bring the guys up? Guys, come on up.
We have one more thing. Mr. Sipoletti has one more. Before you guys come up, it's an absolute pleasure to share tonight that the celebration of our state champions, and in conjunction with the governing bodies and the council of both Caldwell and West Caldwell, our administration, I want to share that our football team, cheerleaders, and pep band will be joining Santa Claus as they parade through Caldwell and West Caldwell, December 24th at 9:00 AM. Further details will follow.
10:00 AM. 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 10:00 AM.
Okay, we're going to now going to continue our program for this evening, but before we do that, again, congratulations to the football team and as was echoed, they're not just incredible athletes, they're incredible men. There's countless stories I've heard over the last couple of years of how they've helped the junior chiefs or other kids in the community and supported their fellow students and other events and going to volleyball games and other things. So I just want to just mention that. And then one other thing I'd like to mention, Mr. Romano was very gracious up here, but leadership usually begins at the top. So thank you for everything you've done, Mr. Romano, over the course of these last few years.
Dr. Conklin?
So from excitement to some sadness, Mr. Paul Mazzio decided to retire and the school district will miss him a great deal. We asked Mr. Devlin to come say a few words, someone who's worked with them the longest in the community at the school, so we're all sad to see you go, but Mr. Devlin could put it into words better than all of us can.
Thank you. I thank you for this honor as well. It is an honor to speak on behalf of the Cal- West Caldwell faculty and administration tonight to recognize Detective Paul Mazzio's service to our school district and community. As a school resource officer, Paul is the complete package, and we have benefited from his expertise, his compassion, and his dedication to our community. As a resource for our school's security, there was no one more dedicated and informed. Over the past seven years that I've worked with Paul, he has annually helped us to analyze our security systems and improve our procedures to better protect our students and faculty. He has run faculty and student security trainings, and he has researched best practices and written reports to help improve our security district-wide. He certainly has taken the security and the protection of our students to heart, but he has also really taken his job of building relationships and creating opportunities for students to heart as well. He, whenever he could, would come into the building to educate our students. They loved it when he came into his driver's ed presentation every year or the dare classes, and certainly as our students got into the high school, they would know Detective Mazzio from the earlier years, and he was a welcoming face, which is what you want the job of the school resource officer to do. It really, you know, security's priority, but to build relationships so that we, with the West Caldwell Police Department and the Caldwell Police Department, students feel comfortable with security, with the police departments, and certainly that's the case with Paul Mazzio. In addition to those type of things and the dedication that he has, many times students would come to him to discuss legal issues of all sorts. They got a parking ticket, et cetera, and Paul was always available. Give him my phone, you know, call me, let me, we'll get in touch, et cetera. But the other thing that a school resource officer does that I don't know if people are aware of this, they often are dealing with students in crisis and maybe at their most vulnerable times, and for that, Paul couldn't be more compassionate, more dedicated, doesn't matter the hour. So our students in the community were in great hands, and I, as a principal, always felt very comfortable saying, "Let's text Paul. Let's call Paul." As far as dedication to the community, you may not know, but he graduated from James Caldwell High School in 1995, correct? And it is apparent to anyone how much he loves the district and loves West Caldwell Caldwell. He would then lead, lend his expertise to our music program, to our coffee house, to the cabaret. He even, you know, this is a great week for this. We have our coffee house on Friday night. Paul will be loading in his sound equipment on Friday afternoon, and he will probably be the last person out of the building on Friday evening as he's loading and as he's unloading. But also, this week is a good opportunity because Paul's the man who was behind the scenes trying to help orchestrate, right, the escort to the football game at Rutgers. He did that last year at MetLife. So if you were in the community before the game or after game, there's Paul Mazzio. So it is, our district has benefited so incredibly from all that Paul Mazzio has done for us. The students and faculty know that Paul genuinely cares about each one of them. My candid conversations with Paul about security, community resources, opportunities for students have also been extremely enjoyable for me, but more importantly, Paul is a friend whose smiling face and jokes I will sorely miss next year. Congratulations.
I'll be honest, I didn't prepare anything because I wanted to speak from the heart. It's going to be bittersweet leaving what I call home, and this is, will always be my home. But that being said, I do think about family. Families grow together, sometimes people move on, but they're still family. And this is my family, this is my home. This is one of the places that I remember as a kid playing basketball, probably shooting hoops at that exact same hoop back however many years ago. And being a graduate from this district, having gone to Jefferson Elementary School, graduated class of 1988, everyone, good year, right? And then on to the middle school and on to the high school, and there's so many memories that I've had throughout the years. This district has given me more than I could ever have expected. And now to be closing out my township career, being a West Caldwell Police Detective, my dream job, and then being able to be part of this school community, a community that I grew up in, a community that taught me how to sing and go to school, to study music in college, and then to fulfill my dream of being a police officer at Jefferson School. I firmly believe this. I've shared this story many a times. These guys are going to get tired of hearing it, but for those of you that don't know, Jefferson School, I was a little kid. I don't believe we had a dare or SRO program, but there was a police car that came around the back of our police headquarters, or back of our school. And at the very back of Jefferson School, there was a squad car. And as a young man, I think back, he just looked like he was this big superhero, and he allowed me to get into a police car and take the microphone. And he allowed me to take that loudspeaker microphone and shout, "Hi, Mom!" And I knew from that moment, this was the coolest job ever. I want to use the microphone. And so after that, it was, every time I saw a police officer that went by, they waved. Those officers waved to me, and I looked forward to seeing the police car drive by. And it's no different than the leaders that I see here that are dressed in blue and my friends and my family. You see them drive by, they're waving. They're your community. Those are the people that are caring about you. I care about you, and this school district has been absolutely amazing. And I will leave you with this, and it's something that I do feel very genuine about. We all do come from different places, and we go in different places. At my graduation ceremony from the Police Academy, I brought up the American motto, and now I have all these educators staring at me, I better get it right, right? "Ipluribus unum," right? In many, one. And in many, one, that means that, look, we all want together. And while we all make our separate ways and have our different paths, we always will still be bonded in that. And so West Caldwell will always be my home. The Caldwell-West Caldwell School District will always be my family, and I love you all. So thank you so very much for all this. Thank you.
We do have a plaque that we'd like to share with Detective Mazzio. I'd just like to read what it says on it. It says, "Paul Mazzio, appreciation for your years of dedication and service to the staff and students of the Caldwell, West Caldwell Public Schools." And it's dated December 2022. Again, thank you Detective Mazzio, and thank you for all the officers for coming out tonight to support. Okay, Dr. Conklin, we're only on page two of this agenda. Do you have anything else?
But we have one other thing to mention. I would be remiss if I didn't recognize the contributions of Mr. Dan Cipollatti as the board president and Ms. Paula Getty as a standing member of this board for several years before this year, and we welcomed her back this year. So we have a little gift of gratitude from the school district for your dedication, so. It's a blue apple, so we wanted to have you remember us. It's a blue apple of Caldwell.
So this, I gotta say, this reminds me of Marie Landfrank. Everything we did with Marie had to have an apple around it in support of the teachers. I met Marie nine years ago, didn't know her, ran against her. We won, and she became an incredible friend of mine and somebody who I truly miss dearly. So thank you very much.
Thank you for your dedication to the students and staff.
May I just add, it was an absolute privilege working with you all, the members of the board, Dr. Conklin, Brian, this year, and it was also a privilege filling in and being appointed to represent Marie on her last year within the board. So thank you.
That concludes my report.
Are we still thanking the workers that are leaving?
You could come up. You want them to come up now? It's up to you, man.
Sure, John, come on up.
Well, I've had the pleasure of working with both Dan and Paula on the school board. I started in 2010, and Paula was already here, and Dan came on in 2014, I believe. So I worked with them for quite some time. And I just want to say a few words. I tried to cut this down to a minimum of accomplishments, so I wanted to touch on some of the major ones. I'm not going to take too much of the people's side. When I came on in 2010, the recession had just started or passed slightly, and we had to make a lot of budget cuts. I got on Paula, was instrumental, and myself, I believe, too, for restoring all the positions that were cut. And in the theme of tonight, the pep band and the coaches, if you remember. So that was a good one. At that time also, the increases to taxes were reduced by state mandate to 2%. So it took a few years to get all the positions back, but we did that while maintaining a property at 2% tax increase. That was a good accomplishment. And then further after Dan was here, we had no cuts in services, and we still were able to maintain the 2% tax cuts. So that's something to be proud of. Some of the other things in the theme of the football, we turfed and added lights to the Bonnell Field in 2014, along with some other bond issues, things that we had in the bonds. That was very important because they were all here today, and they wouldn't have had a home game because everybody plays on Friday night. So that was wonderful. We also instituted full-day kindergarten, and Paula and Dan were instrumental in that. We had been told for a long time that we couldn't use this building. It was going to cost millions and millions of dollars. But we got it down to $600,000, and it passed in referendum. So that's quite a major accomplishment. We also had an energy efficiency bond at no cost to residents. You remember that, Dan? We had, they put on some, we changed all the lights. It was a couple million dollars, but the cost saves that you get, you got paid for itself, and that was a good initiative to do. We also blocked a plan a couple times. I think in 2008 with Paula, and then with Dan and the rest of the board in 2020, we were able to keep the Chiefs name, and that was very important to me. Thanks for that. And I'm glad, one of the last things here, I'm glad you kicked that LGBTQ thing to the next administration because I think a lot of people are against it, and the people that won campaigned that they were against it. So we'll see if that actually happens. So that's all I've got. Thanks again. If you have any. Well, there's no shirts or other plaques here to give you, so I guess that's it. Thanks again.
I'm going to hold actually comments on the president's report to the end of the meeting, if that's okay. So we're going to now move into committee reports. Want Claire to do her thing? Dr. Conklin? Claire has some things to say. Yes, Claire, do you have a few things you'd like to say?
Yeah, so last week was the middle school band concert, last Thursday, and it went very well. But we also have a lot of music events coming up this week and in the following weeks, starting with tonight. The Magical Singers and the Women of Note from the high school are performing at Radio City Christmas Spectacular, so we wish them luck. This Wednesday, the 14th, the middle school is having their chorus and orchestra concert. Thursday, the band chorus and orchestra concert for the high school is going on. Next Monday, December 19th, Lincoln Elementary School is having their concert, followed by Washington's concert on Tuesday and Jefferson's on Wednesday, and finally Wilson's on Thursday. That is all.
Thank you, Claire. Now, I don't believe we have any committee reports this evening, do we?
I have a short one. For curriculum and technology, we met on December 8th here at Harrison. It was the elementary and secondary curriculum directors, myself, Ms. Grosso, Dr. Conklin, Ms. Jacobs, Ms. Jones. We talked about the K-12 health lesson plans, as well as the JCHS selective draft curricula, and just went over the budget preview. That's pretty much it.
Thank you, Chris.
I have one if you're ready. It'll be brief.
Okay, go ahead.
The Facility and Finance Committee met on December 6th. It was myself, Ms. Getty, Dr. Conklin, Mr. McCarthy. A lot of what we talked about, you'll see in the agenda for today. We approved the purchase of several books, including textbooks and books that are going to be going to the library, another round of Chromebooks to cycle through to the students. We also received the drawings for the Grover Cleveland Middle School auditorium, which is going to be a big project for us to improve. That includes new lights, new seats, new carpeting, ceiling and wall repair, paint, and really dressing up that space. We also are going to be sending to the Department of Education the plans to renovate Harrison. So that's being tracked properly, and we're hoping to see some, you know, get those plans back shortly. And finally, we contracted with a company to do a full review of all of our facilities to identify absolutely any kind of concerns or issues that we may have, just to understand what the integrity of all the different buildings are. So if there is an issue with the roof or with the driveway, whatever the case may be, we'll be able to be proactive with those facilities and move forward. That's it.
Great. Thank you, Chris. Now I'm going to ask for a recommendation to approve minutes, and I'll read off the minutes from executive session of 11:07:22 and 11:14:22, from the public conference meeting of 11:07:22 and the regular public monthly meeting of 11:14:22. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Have a second?
Second.
Brian, can I ask you to take the role, please?
Yes. Mr. D'Ambole?
Yes.
Mr. Elko?
Yes.
Ms. Getty?
Yes.
Ms. Grosso?
Yes.
Mr. Cipollatti?
Yes.
5-0, motion carry.
Thank you, Brian. And now we're going to move to public comments on agenda items. I just ask that you follow the following. I just ask that you follow the following. Public participation shall be governed by the following. Participants must be recognized by the presiding officer and must preface their comments by an announcement of their name and address. Statements shall be limited to three minutes' duration and may only address items on the agenda at this particular time. Participants may speak no more than once on the same topic until all others who wish to speak on that topic have been heard, and all statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. So if there are any questions or comments on the agenda at this time, please come up to the podium. Okay. Oh, yes, come on up to the podium.
Well, it's about the things you spoke about, it's about the health curriculum and things like that. So is this the time?
If that's on the agenda, yes, you can come up. And I think that's referenced on the agenda, so you can come up.
My name is Vito Caputo, 251 Clinton Road in West Caldwell, New Jersey. I just have a few questions, and it's mainly just me talking to you guys. Social justice, diversity, acceptance, empathy, individuality, and conformity. What do these things have to do with seventh grade English class? Why is the book Monster, which is a very graphic depiction of prison rape, on the list of books to be read by seventh graders? The book is inappropriate. The reason I'm saying those words is because I stood in the back-to-school night for my daughter, and on the picture, on the screen, I took a picture of the thing that she posted up there, and it involved social justice, diversity, acceptance, empathy, individuality, and conformity. To me, that has nothing to do with English class. This is all CRT. I don't want CRT in my school. I don't want something that's telling my children, because they're born Caucasian, that they're oppressors. I don't think it's right. I think it's not fair. Your teachers in this district are overstepping their bounds every single day. You tell us it's not happening, and I'm telling you that it is happening. My kids are coming to me with what's going on, telling that it's happening absolutely 100%, and it's 100% wrong. It's happening every single day. One of your teachers in our school district overstepped their bounds, and instead of educating our children, they indoctrinated them with their ideology. That is wrong. It is not acceptable to me, and it's certainly not acceptable to a lot of the people who are sitting in this room with me. It really shouldn't be acceptable to you, the Board of Ed, either. All of us, which have been, all of you guys which have been elected by us, we didn't want this radical agenda taught in our classrooms. If I happened to walk into a playground, a schoolyard, or even a classroom, and I started casually sharing my personal information about my life, my sex life, my gender identity, my sexual preference, my kid's gender, or musician's gender or gender identity, or if I just casually started reading verbatim from your new sex ed curriculum, I wouldn't should be led away by the gentlemen who were standing in the back room in handcuffs, and rightfully so. But because I'm, it's a teacher, it makes it okay. To me, it does not. Okay? My daughter informed me that your musical teacher in the middle school gave a lesson on blues musicians, gave a list of about 10 blues musicians. Okay? He instructed them to give anything from their name, where they're from, what they were born, what their music was, et cetera. None of the questions involved gender identity, anything with to do with gender or sexual identity, nothing. He specifically instructed the kids to give reports on, he wanted them basically to do a report on especially Big Mama Thornton and Bessie Smith. Big Mama Thornton, if you, if a few of you aren't familiar, you've all heard the song Howling Dog from Elvis. He got it from her. She was born in the 50s, I'm sorry, born in the 30s. She got popular around the 50s, and her musical career did what it did. It's rumored to believe that she might have been LGBTQ, but we don't know. She passed away in 84. After the lesson, one of the children in the classroom, who happens to have a personal aide, looked and pointed at Big Mama and said, "Woman." The kid obviously has whatever issue, doesn't matter what it is, but he looked and pointed at the kid, at the lady, and he said, "Woman." The teacher then corrected the student and said, "No, their correct pronouns are she and they." How would anyone know that? And why is it necessary to stop this kid and instruct him about your individual preference? This is a woman. She's a female singer. She's a female blues singer. She's a great female blues singer. It wasn't necessary for him to correct this kid and to tell her, tell his child and the rest of the class to use proper pronouns. It's nonsense. The teacher then corrected the student and said, "No, the pronouns are she and they," and told the class that it was rumored that Big Mama was an LGBT person, and then went on to say that she was non-binary. And you should do research on people from the past to check their pronouns. This woman died in 1984. In 1984, this pronoun itself wasn't an issue. Secondly, you're a music teacher. What gives that teacher that right to push his views and his pronoun uses onto the children? What right does he have to instruct the children on anything other than music? Why is he pushing his views onto others? His job is to educate, not to indoctrinate, and it seems to me that a lot of indoctrination is happening. Whether you guys realize it or not, it's happening every single day. There's been numerous instances this year alone, just with the middle school, with these teachers. Keep your sexual ideology, your political views, and your personal opinions to yourselves, and please stick to the lesson plans and educate our children and stop indoctrinating them. Everyone here is worried about the sex ed curriculum. I'm not worried about the sex ed curriculum. I'm worried about everyday classes like music. It's unnecessary. I'm here to tell them that they should be worried about all of it. CRT and sexualization of children has no place in our classrooms. That's it. Thank you. Can any of you tell me what that has to do with music? Why is it being taught in our class? CRT, why is, why are those words important to English? What does it have to do with periods, punctuation, spelling, grammar? Has nothing to do with it. It's insanity, and I'd like it to stop. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments on the agenda? If we're going to talk about actually the curriculum, if we could actually hold that to the end, that'd be, I think I missed that, so. Any other questions on the agenda? If not, let us go through the agenda items, and then we'll come up to open forum. Okay, I'm going to ask for a motion for curriculum and technology?
Sure. Chris, I got this, right? Upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, I'd like to make a motion to approve items A through K on this evening's agenda under curriculum and technology.
Do we have a second? Any questions or comments? If not, Brian can take the role, please?
Yes. Mr. Diambola?
Yes.
Mr. Elko?
Yes.
Ms. Getty?
Yes.
Ms. Grosso?
Yes.
Mr. Cipollatti?
Yes.
5-0, motion carried.
Great. Personnel?
Under the recommendation of the superintendent of school, motion to approve items A through P under certificated and items A through G under non-certificated.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or comments? Brian, can I ask you to take the role, please?
Yes. Mr. Diambola?
Yes.
Mr. Elko?
Yes.
Ms. Getty?
Yes.
Ms. Grosso?
Yes.
Mr. Cipollatti?
Yes.
5-0, motion carried.
Thank you very much. Brian, finance, Chris?
Yes. Motion to approve items A through I under finance and item number, or item A under facilities.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Brian, can I ask you to take the role?
Yes. Mr. Diambola?
Yes.
Mr. Elko?
Yes.
Ms. Getty?
Yes.
Ms. Grosso?
Yes.
Mr. Cipollatti?
Yes.
5-0, motion carried.
Thank you. And Ms. Getty, policy?
Thank you. On recommendation of the superintendent of schools, motion to approve items A and B on this evening's agenda.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Brian, can you take the role, please?
Mr. Diambola?
Yes.
Mr. Elko?
Yes.
Ms. Getty?
Yes.
Ms. Grosso?
Yes.
Mr. Cipollatti?
Yes.
5-0, motion carried.
Thank you. Brian? Okay, now we're going to open up the public comments. This is anything that can include the agenda or outside the agenda. Public participation shall be governed by the following. Participants must be recognized by the presiding officer and preface their comments by an announcement of their name and address. Statements are to be limited to three minutes' duration. Participants may speak no more than once on the same topic until all others who wish to speak on that topic have been heard, and all statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. So if there are any other questions or comments, please feel free to come up to the podium.
I didn't know if I should have gotten up to say something before. I'm Mara Lobato. I'm the vice president of the association, but honestly, this is towards Mr. Cipollatti and Mrs. Getty. Sue Callahan couldn't be here tonight, so she had asked me, and of course, we just wanted to say thank you. I know we may not have seen eye to eye on every issue that ever came to the table, but we know that ultimately you all had the children's best interests at heart, and we want to thank you for that, and we also want to wish you all the best in anything that you choose to do in the future. But ultimately, we just wanted to give you the biggest thank you for everything.
Louis Ferrara, 29 Dawson Drive, West Caldwell.
Good evening, members of the board, administration. I just wanted to come up and once again speak about the health curriculum. What I brought with me is a copy of Lester C. Noacker's plan that they have in Roseland, which is our neighboring town. If I may, actually, I made copies for the board, if I can pass it over. If anybody else in the audience wants them, I have a bunch of copies on the chair over there. They're highlighted with some important information. As parents, you know, we're not looking for 100%. I think that many of us don't want this incorporated at all. However, we're looking to find a happy medium, and I believe that Noacker found a perfect formula that I think maybe the board and the administration should take a look at. So one of the things that they did was about a month ago, they presented a PowerPoint to the entire community of Roseland. And within that PowerPoint, they have labeled slides, so clarifying misconceptions, where it says over here, "Teacher will not take it upon themselves to extend lessons. We intend to loosely interpret the standards and apply simple and succinct definitions of terms. We are not going to discuss these terms in depth or provide instructional guides or materials." They also clearly outlined why they have to approve the curriculum, the purpose of the curriculum, what we recognize about parents and families. One of the bullet points, we see parents as partners in this journey of educating our children. And I noted on the front page over here, some of the page numbers that maybe everybody should take a look at. And what you'll see over there, on page 16, for instance, is that they have a list of how they're going to teach those standards that fall into question. And it has the standard, and then below it says what this looks like or sounds like in Roseland. And they clarified all of these misconceptions. For instance, for second grade, "Teachers will cover medically accurate names for body parts in class as they have in the past. Will share resources with parents to cover accurate names of genitals, so it can be taught at home in a manner that parents feel is appropriate. Information is not presented at school." And you'll see other grades where they use that example as well, where they've said that we will let the parents dictate how to teach that material to their children, while still filling the curriculum with a loose interpretation. So what we've been told in the past is that Caldwell, West Caldwell has to do this, that the state is mandating that they absolutely do that, and we understand that. But you do have the option to loosely interpret this. And I would implore members of this community to look at what Roseland's doing. They're right next door to us, similar town dynamics, and I don't think that it's much for us as parents to ask for this. I think it's a happy medium. I think that each side is giving a little bit and still following what the state is mandating at the same time. Now, I think the theme with everybody that spoke here, we may all disagree, but at the same time, each one of us has pride in this town and pride in this district. And the reason why we're up here and the reason why we're coming to these meetings is not because we're anti-teacher or that we have some sort of like agenda against the town. We love the town. I have so much pride in this town. This is always going to be our home. So we're speaking from a position of passion that we're looking for the board members and the administration to give us some sort of idea as to ways in which you can clarify this information. Now, I also know in the past that there's been a lot of misconception about what's being taught, and I'm sure it's frustrating for the board members. And what I would say is, if you just had a presentation like how Roseland had theirs, it would really clear the air, because everything here is in print. There's a lot that parents, we don't know about, because depending on which meeting you went to, if you went to the Wilson meeting or the Jefferson meeting, information differed, and it spanned over a month. So I think that this is certainly something to look at as a model and a guide, and I think that it would be very beneficial for everybody in the community to have something in writing exactly as to what's going to be taught.
Thank you for your comments. Any other questions or comments?
So if you go on to the website, we've been posting lesson plans, updated lesson plans that explain to you exactly what's being taught. You could actually see the video by clicking the links. Roseland and us both have developed the same exact lesson for second grade. I wouldn't say Roseland borrowed it from us, but I did talk to their superintendent. So if you go online right now to where all the lesson plans have been posted, that people would ask you to see what's being taught, we've been posting updated lesson plans as we said we would, along with the FAQ. So go back to the website, and you'll see all those lesson plans, second grade, fourth grade, third grade, fifth grade, sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade, ninth grade, 10th grade, 11th grade. Everything that everyone's been asking for has been posted online for you to review each specific lesson, assigned to each specific standard, in yellow or green, depending on whether it's moved up or down. You've asked for that, and we're happy to share that with you. Typically, we don't share that with you ahead of time, but all those lessons, except for, I think, three of the 12th grade ones, will be posted by the end of this coming week. So you could see those lessons online and know exactly what videos are being shown, exactly what activities the students are doing, word for word. And that's what the plans they'll stick to.
I understand. You know, I can. Just because we're streaming, so you just have to come back up. I'm sorry, I wanted to take my time. Maybe I should clarify.
I, we looked at the lessons that are on the website. However, if you had this in one document, the way that Roseland does, the Caldwell, West Caldwell webpage, you have to click around to the different standards. Some areas are highlighted in yellow, they're all in different colors. If you had everything on one document exactly as to how you're going to teach it, in addition, there's nothing on the Caldwell and West Caldwell website that says that Caldwell, West Caldwell is going to loosely interpret the standards or allow parents the option or send the information home to the parents to teach to their children. So one of the lessons specifically says it's asynchronous, and that is sent home to parents? For each of these standards that Caldwell and West Caldwell has, it's not. For the one particular one, yes, correct. But we're saying for. And if you, again, not to get into a debate, but if you don't want that standard being taught to your child, there's an opt-out process that's clearly explained on the website as well. So if you don't want that lesson, you don't want that standard, you just can opt out. I understand, but the explanation that we were given was that you had to teach this, that you didn't have the option to interpret them loosely. So what I'm, what we're saying is you do have the option to interpret them loosely. You don't have the option to interpret the standards loosely. You get to determine how you instruct in that standard. There's no loose interpretation of the specific standards.
I think you're getting into some semantics here. So the standards have to be followed. We can't really play around with the standards. But Louis, to your point, how we teach the standards, there's a lot of room for interpretation there.
Correct.
And I think, and I think, I just flipped to a random page here, and Dr. Conklin will correct me if I'm wrong, but I do think that the idea of doing second grade's specific instruction on genitalia is one, Dr. Conklin, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
That is something that we've sent home, that parents do from home.
That's the asynchronous lesson that we've developed, yep.
Right, because that won't be taught in the classroom, that'll be taught at home.
If you look at the lesson plan.
The lesson plan's online, but it does not say.
Says asynchronous. Asynchronous means it's done outside of school. It's done on the parent's night.
Yeah.
On the second grade one, that's for genitalia's asynchronous.
There has been a lot that. There has been a lot that's been kicked around since our last meeting and what's been put up. So I would strongly encourage the folks who have questions, if you haven't looked at those plans. You know, because my concern, and a lot of people's concern, including people on the Board, was the specifics, which is why I understand what you're saying about, hey, here it is, right? I got specifics. I do think that they've put some good specifics on the website.
And if that's the case, then fair enough. But the communication has not been great compared to other districts. So this grade five, for pregnancy IVF, in Roseland, they have video to be determined provided for parents to view with their children. And I understand you may have, and if you did update that, then great. But this was presented a month ago to the residents of Roseland. So if that being the case, we're still a best-case scenario, a month behind neighboring districts.
Mr. Pito, just let me see if anybody else wants to come up before you can back up, if that's okay?
Well, we had this... I know, but we had the, she was next.
She, okay.
I apologize for cutting you. Vito Caputo, 251 Clinton Road. To piggyback on what this gentleman just said, what's to stop these teachers from doing what this teacher just did on Friday, where he just instructed and went completely off the rails in a music class? And again, that's where my main concern is. My main concern is not the health curriculum, it's everything. This stuff is in every single classroom that these teachers are pushing their agenda and their beliefs on these kids. It's not right, and it shouldn't be happening. If you have a curriculum, stick to it. There's no reason that this stuff should be happening, and what's to stop it from happening? This happened Friday with my daughter, in her classroom with these kids. This isn't like weeks ago, months ago, this is three days ago, four days ago. So what's to stop that? What's to keep these teachers where they need to be? So you're talking about the health curriculum is this, the health curriculum is that. I'm not worried about health, I'm worried about everything, every subject. Gym, math, English, everything, music. So what's to stop these teachers from going off the rails and teaching what they want, which is what they're doing? There's no reason they should be sharing their life's experiences with kids. Why is that necessary? It shouldn't be happening. It just shouldn't. So please, does anyone have an answer? Dr. Conklin? Nothing? So again, you guys are telling us it's here, it's there, it's here, it's there. And also, you guys bait and switched us with the vaccine video. So you told us one thing, and then you showed the kids a completely different video that we saw that villainized us for not wanting to get our kids vaccinated, or making it our choice. So again, you guys are saying one thing, and we're getting another. So he's got page after page after page of proof. We're just asking for some type of compromise. It doesn't seem like you guys want to do that, and it's frustrating. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Linda Germin. I live on Memorial Road. I'm up here for primarily three reasons, which are a bit of a mixed bag. Do you guys want the good news first or the bad news first?
Whatever you'd like.
Whatever you'd like. All right, you know what, I'll give you the good news first. So part of why I'm here is actually also just to say thank you to Mr. Cipuletti and Ms. Getty for the years of service. I've only lived in West Caldwell for about three years, so I've only known the school system for the past three years, all of which has been in a pandemic, because my youngest is in second grade. It's been an incredibly trying time for everyone on all fronts. This is an elected position, but I understand it's a volunteer position. I've been to many of the meetings, I've watched many of them online. I went to the candidate's information session before previous election to hear both of you speak, as well as the newly-elected candidates. And I do appreciate your time and the service that you've given to this community. And just that you've spent this time showing up during three very, very frustrating years for everyone involved, so that's appreciated. Number two, since I have a child at Wilson School, the good news there is that I was very excited to find out that the school property is being renovated, and there's going to be a baseball field put in. I live right on that street, I know how swampy it is. My son plays baseball. This is very exciting for me personally. And also, I spent some earlier parts of this year bothering Mr. McCarthy about getting porta-potties on the field, because young children, young children who are in back-to-back games, or they're a little early or a little late, have some difficulties with time management and relieving themselves properly and being aware of their own bodily functions. So I'm also very excited that we will have facilities at several of the schools, and that supports, you know, the whole sports program. And hopefully, some of those girls and boys and everybody will be on the field and on the successful football team in another, you know, five, 10, 15 years as it keeps going. But for the third thing, I'm going to touch on the difficult subject of the health curriculum. My son is in second grade, he's the only child I have in public school right now. I think that the information that's been provided has been clear. I'm probably in the minority at this meeting. I do support the curriculum that's been presented so far. However, my huge caveat, again, being somebody who's been in this district for just three years, is especially because I don't know what pre-pandemic circumstances look like. I had to learn and navigate how things work at the school during a very difficult time, getting clear, concise information about the curriculum, about events, about operations of the school, about teachers who are retiring, anything. Communication is extremely difficult with the whole district constantly. I learned more about the health curriculum going specifically to the Wilson meeting and asking my own specific questions about what was being taught than I did from anything else proactively shared from the district. And again, it's frustrating, because I am hearing afterwards that parents who went to other meetings at the other elementary schools were told completely different things. And here we are, a month later, I did review the website, there is some more information up, but it still leaves a lot to be desired. And it just feels like we are constantly reacting instead of being proactive with releasing information. So I don't know if Ms. Mack and Ms. DiMartini are here this evening, because I know they're going to be walking into this in a month. But I think the number one thing we need as a district is just things presented more clearly, more often, just so that we have less tension in these meetings and parents are more aware of what their options are or when something is shifting and that sort of thing. And, you know, the last thing I'll say before I go is just, you know, for everybody in the room, is one of my top lessons on a personal note coming out of the pandemic is the importance of compassion and grace and forgiveness. This is Dr. Conklin's, beginning of Dr. Conklin's second year. We have two new Board members who are about to come in, who have never been on a Board before. We are in very difficult times. And I just, I hope what I'm saying is being noted, but that people also, you know, can approach this calmly and make respectful requests, so that we can work together as a community to improve everything. And that's all. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, Alexis Verjagen, Cascadra. So I know I said this, I said this, yeah, I'm sitting in my chair.
Alexa, I'm sorry to interrupt you, just if you move the mic just because of the...
Sorry.
People online.
Yeah, I lean and I'm short. I know I said this, sitting there, because I was confused, because I did look it up online, I've been reading through the curriculum. I don't have a lot of time on my hands, so I screenshot it, go back, screenshot it. This is, I'm going to say, obviously, this is a much more concise and like legible understanding for everyone, especially someone who's like not computer literate. But, my biggest concern is I had screenshotted a few things that I was confused on and wanted to ask you guys questions on. And so you had said that it was noted online that it would be sent home for parent discussions. Now, one of the things that I had, one of the things I initially screenshotted was it starts in second grade and it goes to sixth and seventh, which is identifying body parts. I don't really personally have an issue with identifying body parts. But, you know, again, some things can be uncomfortable for people, you know? Like, certain conversations can be uncomfortable for certain age groups and certain children. And I think that's something to take into consideration. And when I was in elementary school, here at Wilson, in this town, the boys and the girls were separated come third grade. The girls had the mentor cycle talk, and the boys had the washer body parts, it's going to start stinking. But we were separated. To have a conversation in a group of 30, I would be uncomfortable. As a 33-year-old, I would be uncomfortable having that conversation in a mixed-gendered room. I cannot imagine how eight-year-olds or 10-year-olds would feel. But, because it doesn't specify online that we're going to separate the children, so that's something that was a question of mine. But the bigger question is that, in this one, it says that they're going to send a paper packet home to allow the parents to discuss proper names and genitalia and things like that with their children at their own terms and their own comfort. Here it says, "The way that we're going to go about teaching it is class discussion and questioning, class projects, teacher observation, teacher feedback, class activities, peer shelf, self-assess, and peer assess." Nothing in there does it say, "We're going to involve the parents on this discussion," because it's awkward. That's, you know what I'm saying by that? Like, it's an uncomfortable already topic. And there's, if your concern is children that are confused or uncomfortable in the body that God gave them, or having struggles in life, don't you think that's a really excellent conversation to be having on the living room couch and not in a group of 30 mixed-gendered kids? Think about the kid that we're changing the curriculum for, right? Like, that's an awkward conversation to have with anyone. We should have it with our loved ones first. Or, if our loved ones are not tolerating, a guidance counselor. I don't think it should be in a group of 30 young children. That's just my personal belief. But if it's not going to be, I think that should be online. Because right now, it says really, really specifically that it's going to be class projects. It also says that, where's the other one? Sorry. Again, lots of screenshots, sorry. I had to do this at work. Where, I am a teacher, so I have nothing against teachers. I don't think that any of this is their fault, I think it's being pushed down from above, and I understand that. We teach what we're supposed to teach. But there's one about gender roles, where again, it says it starts in second grade, and it says, "We're going to discuss how individuals make their own choices about how to express themselves," which I think if done in a very soft and gentle tone, is okay. Like, it's okay for boys to play with dolls, and it's okay for girls to like trucks. There should be no issue with that. It's okay for boys to like pink, it's okay for girls to like blue. But the problem that I have as a parent is there's no line drawn here. Like, in this one, one of the lines that I liked very specifically was, and I'm going to not be able to find it now that I want it, it was that, "Teachers will not take it upon themselves to extend lessons." Nowhere in this online curriculum for the Caldwell West Caldwell Board of Ed does it say, if a teacher leans one side or the other, they either cannot teach it, because it's against their belief, or they cannot take it too far, because that is their belief. Do you know what I'm saying? Whereas, as a parent, I'd like to be there, like, is there a, where's the wiggle room? Do you know what I mean? Like, if there's a teacher who is, let's say, non-binary, are they allowed to go into detail about their sex lives with the third grade? Because it's, gender roles is in the curriculum, and we're not saying they can't extend it. Or, are we saying that, like, do you understand what I'm saying here? Like, where are we drawing the line, and where are we saying, like, this is acceptable, but this isn't? Or, this is a parent's responsibility or a family responsibility, this is a teacher role, or maybe we should have a guidance counselor intervene and discuss it with the family if we're concerned? Like, I just think this is a very touchy subject, no matter who you are, no matter what you believe, no matter how you feel internally. I just think it's a very personal and touchy topic. And to have it so wishy-washy is concerning, because there's no real lines. And I guess that's what I'm asking you guys, is like, where do we draw the lines? And where is it going to be sent home to parents? And where is it going to be up to the teachers to decide, you know, where we go with it? So that's where I'm concerned, and that's where I'd like you guys to, you know, explain further if you can. Thank you.
Frank Bocciello, 51 Park Street. The last time I had asked where you each stood on, you know, on the curriculum, you didn't want to give your opinion. So are we, are you considering changing the 10 minutes a month, right? That's what we're doing, 10 minutes a month? One lesson outside of gym? Is there any consideration given to changing how that's being done? Dr. Conklin?
If you can answer all your questions, and I'll...
So that's one, okay, fine. So the meeting at K through 2, there were 10-minute sessions. I felt that was a little rushed, not a lot of information was, you know, given there to speak. Somebody said, "If we save one kid's life, it's all worth it." I would say to you, what if we confuse a whole bunch of little kids? You know, second grade, third grade. There are a couple of things in the materials that were switched from eighth grade to fifth grade. Dr. Conklin, all along the way, said, you know, not a lot of new stuff, maybe just moving it from, you know, from one grade to a next grade, but not a lot of new material. An eighth grader and a fifth grader are two totally different things. If you have an 18-year-old having sex with a 16-year-old, or a 17-and-a-half-year-old, they're going to go to jail. So those are big differences, like I've said previously. I'm not going to mention specific things like I have in the past. You've said I did, and I went back, and I, you know, I didn't mention any of those things. I don't think it's necessarily...
And I apologize.
That's okay. So my other problem is, not specifically what you're going to teach a second grader, it's, I wasn't allowed to go to the fifth grade meetings that you had at the schools, you know, if you didn't have a fifth grader. So that's where the stuff starts to get a little dicey. And then if we don't all come up here and say something now about these things, and get answers from you, and have real conversations at these meetings, what happens in two years? What happens in four years, when the next hot topic, you know, issue comes up? I went back to 2009, and there was no mention of gender identity or, you know, identity or any of that stuff. It didn't exist. So times change, yes. In my house, my son will not, you know, doesn't wear a dress, can't come down in a dress. There's no question, that's what I teach him. He comes home from school and somebody else is teaching him something else. Now I got to conflict with the teacher, in a, I guess, politically correct way, for some matter. So, you know, and I'm also looking at, you know, reading levels and math levels and other things. And these things, you know, there's other areas that we could focus on. These numbers aren't so great in town, and we're just coming out of a pandemic. So it's only 10 minutes a month, but over the course of a year, it's an hour or two hours, whatever it might be. Don't you think that if there's a different option, you should, you know, say, hey, we're considering this as an option? Or is it something that it's already preset? You're going to do this, and it's going to be, you know, once a month, or whatever they had told us at the meeting? I mean, but there's a lot of other stuff here that, you know, what happens if we can get 10 more kids to read better? As opposed to, you know, learning about anal sex in eighth grade? I mean, I don't understand where that comes from. Let them learn that in the playground when they're 15, like normal people do. I mean, you know, it's screwed up. So, you know, are you considering other things? I know we're waiting now until January, until the new Board members come in. Or is, you know, this all a waste of time, and it's just, you know, you're playing with what curriculum is available? You know, we're not allowed to question teachers, right? Teachers are great, yeah, they are, but, you know, they could come and interpret things their own way. We can't question how people are spending money that we're giving them on their, you know, in their clubs and in their things. There was, you know, some guy here a couple of weeks ago, and I'm all for giving people money, but, you know, why does he have to submit receipts? I mean, I have to submit receipts. So it's like, where does it start? That's my questions and points. Dr. Conklin?
So we have one lesson a month, K to 5. The K to 5 presentation was for K to 5, there was no second, fifth, it was just K to 5. So there's no division between third grade or fifth grade or second grade.
All right, so they focused on a second grade? The least controversial lesson?
If you were at the presentation, it was just a description of what the lessons would look like. We continue to post lessons online. In the next few weeks, all of the lessons with all the new standards will be online, divided by K to 5, 6 to 8, and 9 to 12. So every parent will be able to go through each individual lesson that includes all of the new or moved standards. So you'll be able to see them online, in yellow, in green. All of the links that are available for videos that we'll show will be posted. You can click on the link and watch it. If the link isn't available, there'll actually be a transcript of the video. So you'll know where... there'll actually be a transcript of the video. So you'll know word for word what's being said in that video that's being presented to your children. So if you have a concern of any of those lessons, I suggest you take the advantage and opt out. That's why we're giving all these opportunities for parents to see them.
So are you saying, so that's sort of like what you, you know, what the, what the plan is right now? Not all at the last day, not, you know, sort of different options?
That's been the plan over the last few months.
What's that?
This has been the same plan.
No, I know. I'm saying, that's what these conversations are for, right? To figure out different things. So, so you're not considering any alternatives to implementing this? Because you're not, you know, forced by the state to implement it in this particular way. You're choosing to...
I don't know what you mean by this particular way. The lessons are...
Other districts are doing it on the last day. Other districts are doing it in a different manner.
Well, they may be doing one of the lessons on the last day, but they're not doing all of the standards on the last day.
But they're, they're giving, you know, the residents a different option, right? So this is the option that we're choosing.
I'm not sure what you mean by option that we're choosing.
Nobody here, you know, wants sort of like different changes. So, you know, nobody's coming in here supporting this, you know?
The option is, the option as I think it's been discussed, is that if you decide you do not want your child to be in that particular class, that particular 10-minute session, you can opt your child out. That's what's being discussed.
You know, I mean, the opt-out thing, I mean, it doesn't really make much sense though, right?
I'm not sure why.
Because you're going to take one or two kids out of the classroom, all right? It's still the material. It's still the material, okay?
I understand.
Little kids, I mean, you know, I pass gas in the house and my son will tell the whole, you know, neighborhood because that's what he hears.
Sir, there's, there's 20 people in this room right now.
Okay.
There's 30, there's over 2,000 students.
Sure.
Right? So you're asking us to change for what you believe.
I'm not saying for me, though. I mean, you got plenty of people that just don't agree.
It's not a majority.
It's, it's, you know, it's, it's a conversation.
It's not a majority.
Hi, everybody. Treza Akardi, Cleveland Street. First of all, I do want to apologize for the way I reacted with my, my language. I am very passionate about this. And it's bittersweet for me because I do have an 18-year-old who's graduating this year. And he really got to see what it was like to be in school in a normal world. And I'm really sad because I have a, a nine-year-old and a four-year-old. One of them's a daughter. I will tell you, I'm Sicilian. If anybody talks to my daughter in school about any of this stuff, they got problems. That's not a threat, that's a promise, okay? The other thing is, is that I have more friends that are LGBTQ than probably most of you even know or will ever meet. My cousin is transgender. Another cousin. Half my family's gay and transgender. I have sponsors that I sponsor that are transgender. Has nothing to do what I'm sponsoring them about. Their sexuality has nothing, it's none of my business. I'm helping them through other things in life, right? So I don't understand why we're making this as such a big deal. So, for instance, I spoke to my transgender friend and I said to her, "What are you," him, excuse me. I said, "What do you, how do you feel about this? How do you feel about these lessons that they're, you know, we're talking to the kids about? If you don't feel right and you have body parts of a little girl and you feel like a boy, it's okay." You know, he said, "You know what? That takes away from what I was born with. I didn't have a choice." He didn't have a choice. He was born that way. Now we're saying, "Oh, it's okay. You have a choice." Kids, I was a confused child. I know kids are confused. Very influential. I mean, very easy to be directed. Not a lot of leaders these days, right? It's like everybody's being like, like sheep, okay? Um, we don't bring politics. We don't bring religion. Why are we bringing sex into schools? Like, you know, I teach my kids that a vagina is a vagina and a penis is a penis. That's fine. But that's for me to do, right? And like, my cousin comes over, you know, it's, it's a she. Forty years old, turned into a her. Six foot four, turned into a her. We just know her as Ariana. We don't know it as Setmo, that he used to be. It's Ariana, period. You know, same thing with my friend. Comes over, this is L. This is L. He's a boy, period. And it's kind of like we're, we're then making them feel different. So I don't think this is about like LGBTQ and trans. I think this is about incorporating, you know, lessons that don't need to be teach and taught at school level. That's something I want to be able to do with my children. And you know what? Like, I talked to my other cousin who, who goes around, she's really big with education and she goes in with special needs and special ed. And she said, "Treza, you have no idea. Some kids, they go home and their parents find out that they're, they're gay or transgender and they're beat so bad that the parent is now in jail." So like, I feel for that. I, that's horrible. Like, like, oh, that's awful. I would want to be there and, and help my child figure things out. I think that's disgusting. But there is that 1%. It's 1% though, right? Another thing that I wanted to say is, I forgot what I was going to say. I just, I just, I believe that there's, there's another way to do this. There's got to be another way to do this. Like, like, I, I don't believe that this is productive and, and this is going to be constructive to the children. I think we're going to really confuse our kids. I think we confuse them already on a lot of different levels. Acceptance, not being accepted, bullied, not being bullied. This is a sure way. I heard in the high school, they're peeing all over the transgender bathroom floor. How could that make a kid who's transgender feel good? I don't know. Like, that would, if I was transgender, that would bother, that would hurt me. So, I mean, this is supposed to be about love and, and respect? None of it is. I have parents that are talking, you know, bad because I'm here at this meeting and I wasn't at the math curriculum. You know, "We went to Jefferson, we went to Jefferson School and you read the book. It was a beautiful book. I really loved it. I enjoyed it, but it was a curriculum for second grade. Why am I..." That's not changing. So why are we touching? Why are we so afraid to touch the levels that we're going to be changing the curriculum, like third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth, ninth, 10th? Do we all need to move? I mean, like, what should we do? Can't we do something as a community? Listen, I love that we all go to the games. We all stand outside. We yell for the kids. We cook on Thursday. Like, this is an awesome community. Can't we do something to pull together, to leave certain things for teachers to teach? He could have opted out, but his daughter was still, said that that's supposed to be a they. I mean, it's that, he couldn't opt out of music class. I mean, there's got to be some kind of bylaws. There has to be. Like, this is not what our world's turning into. Like, because this is scary. This is scary beyond, beyond belief. And I think that we're really going to create, we're going to create more confusion in the, in the children. And that's when they start acting out more. Because they, they're confused, you know? And I, I believe that that's why a lot of kids go to school and, and hurt other students or other people. There's going to be more teasing. They're just, "You guys have no idea what you're up against. If you would just pray about it, maybe to whatever you believe in and ask for guidance, maybe you would find out." But I have and I've gotten it. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? Just because we're streaming and they can't hear it from there.
Oh, sorry. You guys said the opt-out, right? So my kid opts out of health class. Cool. But I brought to you, the two problems happened in two separate classes that have nothing to do with health. One was English. One was music. How does she opt out of that? How do I opt my kid out of that conversation? How does anybody in those classes opt their kids out of those conversations? So, like I said, my problem, my worry is not the health curriculum. I don't have an issue with you guys giving basic sex ed, basic whatever it is, basically even explaining to these kids what it is to be gay. I don't have a problem with that. I have a problem with some of the subject matter that's being taught. Some of these teachers oversharing way more than they should. That's the problem I have in classes like math, reading, writing, et cetera. It's a dead horse that I'm beating up here. But he said opt out. How do they opt out of those classes? How does my kid opt out of these conversations? She can't. She'll become target A by the teacher. She'll go from getting straight honor roll, which she's gotten since she stepped foot in middle school. So all of a sudden, now she's getting a D or a C because her opinion's different than the teacher's. How do we stop that? I'm sure you don't have an answer, sir.
I was going to ask, if you could email me specifics, I'd be happy to talk with you.
Yes, sir.
Talk to you about this.
Sure.
I don't want to discuss.
But I wanted it on public record, so that way...
No, I understand that. That's why I'm asking you to email me. I was going to talk to you afterwards.
No problem. Because if I take it to the school, then I got to deal with the principal and it's, I don't want the teachers getting in trouble. Just, just keep yourself to yourself. That's all I ask.
I appreciate that. That's why I'm asking you to email me. I was going to ask you afterwards.
I got you. But, but you're saying opt out to everybody. There's no option to opt out of these other things.
No, I understand. The only thing you can opt out of is health classes and dissection. So those are the two things you can't opt out of those classes.
Not a problem. And again, I don't personally have a problem with some of what's being taught. It's the other stuff that I have an issue with, as I'm sure all these people do.
Right.
You guys also brought up that there's 2,000 students and we're just 30 parents. There's thousands of us out there, hundreds of us out there that are talking about this stuff. I'm sure you guys know. So to throw numbers in our face like that is insulting. Thank you.
I'm the one that said it, not the superintendent. Any other questions or comments? Okay. If not, we are going to move. But before we do that, I just wanted to say a couple, couple of quick words. As was mentioned, obviously, this is our, our last board meeting. I've been on the board for nine years and I served with a lot of great people. Many of them are here, some of them aren't. So I'd just like to kind of mention a couple of their names and thank them quite honestly for all the support and everything they've given to me. Dr. Heinecke, the first president I served under was Ms. Davidson, Ms. Mary Davidson. John King, who's in the back, was there with me for, for a series of years. Tom Adams, of course, Ms. Landfrank, who I just think the world of. We continue to always be advocates for our children. It may not seem that sometimes, but unfortunately, everybody out in the audience doesn't have the full picture of what we have to deal with on a regular basis. And we have to advocate, we will and implore, and I'm sure they always will, advocate for the kids first. But we also are elected by the entire community. So it's about dealing with everybody in the community, right? Both Caldwell and West Caldwell. So that also has to be taken into account. And one thing I always say to the board members, and I say as much as I can to the public, is always come and advocate for your kids. Just please do it in a respectful way. Nobody's up here and there, nobody's going to be against you. We'll listen. The administration is here. We listen. We go back in private session and we discuss. But I know sometimes people are looking for comments back. Quite honestly, we cannot comment back on a lot of this stuff. We have all signed decrees for ethics. And quite honestly, some of the questions you ask us, if we do respond back, are violating those ethics. So I just ask, going forward, for the remaining board members and the new board members, consider that as you're going through. But again, continue to advocate for your kids, but please just be respectful for the people who are up here. This is a volunteer position. And just please, please continue to keep that into account. I mentioned a couple of people I've served under. The first one was Mary Davidson as president. The second was Paul Leggetti as president. And the next female I served under was Marie Landfrank as president. And quite honestly, I'm going to ask you, I'd love to go out, serving under another powerful woman. So I'm going to hand the reins right now over to Ms. Grosso. I'm going to just ask Ms. Grosso to conclude this meeting.
Just before I conclude, I don't want to step on the beautiful, eloquent words that Dan said, but I think I do speak on behalf of Chris and Chris and myself to say that there is no greater challenge and no greater honor than public service. So thank you for putting the children of this district sometimes before your own and always before yourselves. You are the two of the most selfless people that we have ever had the luxury and privilege and honor to be in a room with. So I thank you both so much. I also know that on behalf of all of us, and I hope this is okay, Dan, I'd like to also extend that to our teachers, to our administrators. And this district is very difficult to serve, to our coaches, some of whom we found tonight do it voluntarily, and to all those forgotten tonight. We are here for children, right? It's one of the most difficult jobs because as we all know, we're very passionate about it because they are our treasures. They are our everything. So respectfully appreciate all of the comments tonight, but also respectfully want to just let those servants of our district know that you are supported and appreciated by this Board of Education. With that, I'd like to make a motion to enter executive session.
I'll make that motion.
Can I have a second?
I'll second it.
This motion is adjourned. Everyone, happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and a happy and healthy New Year.